Color Guard, call. Color Guard, stand by. That's it. I thought you were going to say.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, a God, individual, of liberty and justice.
Color Guard, form. Color Guard, retreat. Color Guard, dismissed.
So everyone, please have a seat. I would like to invite the scouts, if they would, to come up to the front of the room so that we can memorialize this day with a picture with you and the chancellor and the board of trustees. I want to acknowledge Jared McCosh, a second-class scout, Cordelia Dell, a life scout, Joshua Dell, a life scout, scoutmaster Eric Feldman, scoutmaster Scott McCosh, and scoutmaster Jim Ammons, who actually also is the senior resident Superior Court judge in Cumberland County. And they were very kind to take me up on my invitation to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if the board wouldn't mind maybe coming to the front of the room here, I know that John, the photographer, is going to get a picture of us if you guys want to come over to the front or right here. John, where's it?
I'm invested how the scouts and everybody come right here.
Up up front? Okay, so everybody kind of go up that way. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jim Ammons, senior resident Superior Court judge in Cumberland County. More importantly, I'm an assistant scoutmaster at Troop 740. I was also a boy in Troop 740 in the 1960s. Our troop was formed in 1946 by veterans from the World War coming back to our hometown, starting a church, and within 13 months, starting a Boy Scout troop. This year, we will be 75 years old. I've been involved in scouting since the 60s and as a scoutmaster since about 2000. And for years, one of our mottos has been, "Troop 740, building men since 1946." Today, I'm glad that we not only build men, but we build women too. We have a girl sister troop, Troop 740G, and Cordelia is part of that troop. We've also brought a small token of appreciation for today. Dave, we have Troop 740 coins. Thank you for having us. I want to recognize Eric Feldmeyer, our scoutmaster. Eric, if you could come up just a minute.
Dave, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you and the board of trustees here to allow us to come up here and do this and enjoy the day at UNC Chapel Hill. Thank you all.
In full disclosure, one of my sons is actually an Eagle Scout from Troop 740. So at this time, I'd like to ask our sitting secretary. Trustee Turner had to go leave for business last night, so I'll call on Assistant Secretary Summers to call the roll, please.
Mrs. Artis Neal.
Here.
Mr. Bullock.
Here.
Mr. Bryan.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Dr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Codis.
Here.
Mr. McCullen.
Mr. Meekins.
Here.
Mr. Patel is not here. Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mr. Richards.
Here.
Mr. Turner is not here. Ms. White. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. At this time, as Chair of the Board of Trustees, it is my responsibility to remind all members of this board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by that act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict of appearance or the conflict itself should be identified, please, at this time. So are there any board members who are aware of a conflict at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Having already read the materials listed in the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be moved to the discussion portion of either the open or closed session of the agenda? Do I hear any motion to move anything off of the closed, off of the consent agenda to either open or closed session? Hearing, hearing no need to move anything off of that agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent? Yes, sir. Yes, okay, so I do have a request that trustee McCullen is recusing himself from this vote because an item does relate to you. So, Mr. McCullen, we will honor that. You're recused from this vote. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So again, I'd like to, they've left, but I do want to thank Scout Troop 740 for presenting the American flag and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. I sat here 70 days ago and outlined several commitments of this board. First being promoting the full opening of the university. And those 70 days ago, despite my confidence and the confidence of this board and the commitment and confidence of the administration, there was, there was uncertainty about how the world would look and how this campus would look today. In addition, however, to our confidence, there was optimism, faith, and commitment on behalf of the university staff and all those stakeholders who love this place so much. The team charged with making that happen came before the board and outlined a plan. Since then, that team has gone about the job of executing that plan. So as Chair of the Board and on behalf of the Board, we want to thank that team for executing the plan that they laid out so far. For example, Dr. Amir Barzan, who is a family medicine physician, has continued to lead the testing efforts on campus steady every day. Ken Pittman, Executive Director of Campus Health, has daily shifted resources, adjusted staff hours, operations, and more importantly, optimistically made things happen. Nate Knufman and his team, including folks like Gordon Merklin, who is now, as I understand, the unofficial University Tent Finder, has, have worked tirelessly and executed strategies that were necessary to keep the university moving forward and operations smooth. For example, the tent that I refer to were some of the tents that we now have around the dining area in order to spread out and give opportunity for students to spread themselves with respect to social distancing and having other places so they're not as crowded in dining halls. The staff at all levels should be thanked for the daily work that gets done every day on this campus, in the residence halls, on the grounds, in the dining halls, the campus police, the parking department, Cheryl, Cheryl Stout and her team. I have learned over the last 60 days that that, for example, is quite an endeavor to handle the parking at the University of North Carolina. And Nate, you and Cheryl and that team should be thanked, and I'll thank you for that. Additionally, our faculty deserves a tremendous amount of credit for teaching classes across the university, for continuing to conduct and perform research at a high level, for mentoring students and being there for students, and being here despite that uncertainty. You know, how about our students? You know, in 25 to 30 years, I am sure many of the students, maybe even sooner than that, but many of the students who have gone through the last 18 months to two years of the COVID-19 pandemic will be sitting right here in this chair, leading this university with that experience in their tool belt. Our students, I've, one thing is evident, and I've talked to a lot of students, and I have a student here who is a junior, one thing is for sure, you know, they want to be here. They really do. They want to be here, and they sure as heck don't want to go home. They experienced that already. They are hungry to learn. They really are. I think this incident, the students that are on this campus, from my interaction with them, having had, having been denied the ability in their, in their view of not being able to experience the on-campus life at Chapel Hill, has really inspired them to work to achieve their own successes and contribute to North Carolina and the world, probably, maybe like no other group. In that first meeting, I also stated a commitment to being an economic engine for North Carolina, and we're working very hard in that effort, this board and the university community. Today, for example, just a small thing that this board can do, we anticipate that we will approve a building that, when finished, will facilitate the doubling of our undergraduate business school, modernize the delivery of business education so that North Carolina can compete in the future at a very high level. We will continue to have an educated and prepared workforce, and we'll continue in that effort to contribute to the Research Triangle Park started by Governor Terry Sanford years ago. At the Medical School, Roper Hall continues to rise and will train physicians who will not only discover cures, but will treat us and our children as primary care doctors and specialists across the state of North Carolina. We continue to support the strategic plan. The strategic plan will be a vital tool as this board begins its new role, working more closely with respect to the creation of and approval of an all-funds unified university budget. The budget process is an opportunity. It's an opportunity to match what we spend money on and how we spend the money that the legislature entrusts us with, that the tuition and fees that students pay, and that the dollars donated, how that money is spent in that budgeting process will give us the opportunity to match that with the strategic plan. The plan will also inform and guide the assessment of board authorities. We had a discussion yesterday about board authorities and the delegation of those authorities, and, and how the board will continue to carry out its, its role in, in the governing structure of the universities, of this university and initiatives moving forward. The assessment of authorities and delegations is a healthy exercise. It will help us to really assess how things get done. With that in mind, I am also announcing the formation of a new standing committee of this board, that being the Strategic Initiatives Committee. Dr. Perrin Jones, trustee Jones, has agreed to chair that committee, and that committee will have its first meeting in November. Finally, let me say this. Those of us who serve as trustees of the nation's first public university, do not come here lightly. Each board member comes here with his or her responsibility in mind, with a sense of humility, a commitment, and a love for this place. We come here understanding that this university is the university of all the people, that the people of North Carolina look to us to solve problems. They don't look to us to cause them. Thank you. I do have additional item in my remarks, and I would ask, please, let me see, there he is. If Mr. Joel Curran, Vice Chancellor and Charge of Communications, will please come to the front of the room. I know I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Curran, but... I think you can be, you can be wherever you want. You've earned that. This is a resolution of appreciation for Joel Curran, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, this day, September 23rd, 2021. Whereas Joel Curran, a graduate of this university in 1986, returned to his beloved alma mater to serve as the university's first Vice Chancellor of Communications from 2013 to 2021, and has provided counsel to two chancellors and a voice to the university through some of the university's most challenging moments, as well as historic celebrations. And whereas Vice Chancellor Curran has developed a strong team to tell Carolina stories in more creative and engaging ways, while managing increasingly complex issues in higher education and at Carolina. And whereas, under the leadership of Vice Chancellor Curran, University Communications is a vastly, is vastly different from what it was eight years ago, with high-performing group of senior leaders who manage a broad portfolio of communications and related functions. Whereas Vice Chancellor Curran launched numerous websites, including unc.edu, offering more robust content, expanded university social media presence, bolstered its media relations capabilities, and streamlined our public records process. And whereas Vice Chancellor Curran created The Well, which, by the way, I read every day, a popular new website and daily email with important employee-related updates and stories, and opened a new UNC Visitor Center on Franklin Street. And whereas Vice Chancellor Curran has nurtured our local town and grown partnerships with elected officials and our business leaders while serving as the Senior University Administrator on WUNC North Carolina Public Radio's Board of Directors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, expresses sincere appreciation to Vice Chancellor Curran for his leadership and service to the university. Vice Chancellor Curran. Chairman, does that require? Joel, Joel, we wish you well, except on the 30th of October, when, when, when Matt Brown takes the football team to South Bend. Chairman, does that require a second? Was that, do we need to, do we need? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I was getting ready to, may I have a motion to accept that resolution? And do we have a second? Second. Having a first and a second, no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chancellor. Also, at this time, I would ask Mr. Theodore TJ Scott if he wouldn't mind coming before the board. As Chair of the Board, I have a resolution of appreciation for Mr. Theodore TJ Scott from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill dated this date, September 23rd, 2021. Whereas Mr. Scott, a native of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and graduated from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill in 2012 with a Bachelor of Science degree in psychology and a minor in chemistry, and whereas Mr. Scott will receive his Master's of Business Administration from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill in May of 2022, and whereas Mr. Scott began his professional career serving the university through its events and development offices in 2012, but quickly found his calling by supporting the Board of Trustees in 2013. Whereas Mr. Scott has always, with the highest level of dedication and integrity, devoted significant time and attention to advancing the mission of the university. And whereas Mr. Scott most admirably organized trustee meetings, events, activities, all while making the seemingly impossible tasks look simple and routine. Whereas Mr. Scott has worked tirelessly to make these, his university and everyone around him better during a prosperous and challenging time alike, and whereas Mr. Scott has done all of the foregoing with the wit, passion, intellect, and drive, second to no other Tar Heel. And whereas Mr. Scott will always be a devoted Tar Heel wherever his journeys may take him. Now therefore, let it be resolved, and I will have a first and a second after this, that current members of the Board of Trustees, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, along with many previous members of the board, deeply thank TJ Scott and express their great appreciation for his leadership, devoted service to this board and the university and to the state of North Carolina. Now therefore, let it further be resolved that TJ Scott is hereby elected an honorary trustee of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, and he shall be invited to attend all regular meetings of the Board of Trustees
He will attend.
To, to run the AV equipment. And he shall become a member ex officio of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Board of Visitors. Do I have a motion to accept that resolution? Mr. Davis, do I have a second? A second, but this will be approved by acclamation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Scott, thank you and congratulations, and we wish you the best. We wish you the best in all of your new endeavors. We're going to miss you. All right, with that being said, we'll move to the next agenda item. I'll call on Student Body President and Trustee Lamar Richards for remarks.
Thank you, Chair Bullock. I am continuously grateful to be leading a student body of over 30,000 talented, curious, and passion-driven students, undergraduate, graduate, and professional alike. As we continue to navigate an ongoing global pandemic, I remain constantly invested in ensuring our students have equitable advocacy and fair representation in all spaces critical to the quality function of our university. As we sat and discussed delegated authorities yesterday and heard from university council, financing operations, academics, I cannot help but think about the authorities delegated to the self-governing students of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. We have a student conduct system that is completely student-run, a student fee audit committee that oversees student fee raises, decreases, and implementation, over 145 different governing committees and groups with student representation, and two large and robust legislative bodies that appropriate over $500,000 to hundreds of student groups on campus each year, all overseen by a student representative that is a full-voting member of the Board of Trustees at this university. This is the true idea of self-governing students, who in the face of adversity, continue to persevere and remain resilient. Both the undergraduate and graduate professional student governments have been hard at work with ensuring students have quality, effective advocacy through new, exciting, and innovative ideas. I'll briefly speak on a few here today. The Richard Epps Emerging Leaders Program, named after the first black student body president of UNC, is a new emerging leaders program dedicated to providing first-year and transfer students from historically marginalized communities with leadership development, professional development, career counseling, access to service learning projects across the state of North Carolina, and a paid summer internship experience. Through the support of the Office of the Provost and Chancellor's Office, the student government will be, for the first time, sponsoring the distinguished lectureship on racial equity and belonging, inviting a talented, renowned scholar to Carolina each year to help us in confronting and grappling with our colorful past and racial history, and most importantly, offering Carolina, the entire Carolina community, with bold and exciting ideas about how to address these pressing issues. The Graduate and Professional Student Government hosted a successful town hall on COVID-19 policies with Doctors Amir Barzan and Audrey Pettifor last week, and their gracious President Neal led a dedicated team of students from across the campus in presenting a proposal to Vice Chancellor Knufman and Chancellor Guskowitz on the campus safety and security student fee increase handed down by the Board of Governors. And finally, I'd like to mention and acknowledge that, for the first time in recent history, UNC's student government has been asked to host the 2021 ACC Advocacy Days in Washington, DC, featuring the best student leaders from across the ACC schools. This is something we're excited to do alongside NC State this year. With all of this, one thing is for sure, the 300-plus students in all of student government, much like all of our campus, are hard at work each day on behalf of the students of Carolina. But I want to be clear that our mandate as student leaders, while often complex, is clear. We serve and protect the interests of the students of the university, and by extension, the university at large. We are vital and crucial members of the shared governance system at UNC, as are faculty, staff, community members, and this very body. I want to take my final moments to speak about me and the chancellor's relationship. As I mentioned earlier, earlier, things are very complex at this university, and this is one of those very things. While our mission is in alignment, we often have different constituencies and governing bodies to which we are responsible. This is not atypical for a student body president and the chancellor of a large university like Carolina. While he and I may not always agree, I think I speak for the both of us when I While he and I may not always agree, I think I speak for the both of us when I say that we do our best to work in tandem on behalf of all the students of this university and navigate complex situations together. And when we cannot, there's a respect for the process of which we must take to move forward productively. It is in this spirit of productivity, inclusion, belonging, and forging new dynamic relationships that I commit for the remainder of my term and time at Carolina. And I hope that this body will join me in uplifting and empowering this very important and timely work. Thank you.
Thank you, President and Trustee Richards. I'll now call on Chancellor Guskowitz for remarks.
Great. Thank you, Chair Bullock. Thank you, Student Body President and Trustee Richards, and I appreciate your leadership and enjoy working alongside you to move the university forward and support our student body. We're in our sixth week of the semester, and it's been incredibly exciting to see the campus come alive since we were together last, to just experience Move-In Day, Convocation in Keenan Stadium, the Bell Tower lighting, and many more incredible events on campus here. We've missed those traditions, and I think we've all realized that, being back in person, how important that really is, and providing these in-person experiences for our students is really important. The football game last weekend was also a really exciting evening here on campus, but I also hope you'll get out to see other campus events. Tonight, we have women's soccer. Tomorrow night, we have field hockey. So take every opportunity you can to get out to support our student athletes. I want to just thank our, the hard work of our faculty, staff, and students that are making this on-campus experience possible. They deserve a lot of credit, and as Chair Bullock's already mentioned, our students need this, they deserve this, and I just can't thank everybody for putting forth that effort and just continue to be amazed by the resilience of our community. I want to focus my comments on three, in three areas. Our rankings, our response to COVID, and our efforts to spur innovation in downtown Chapel Hill. First, our strength as a university was reflected a few weeks ago in our US News rankings that came out. For the 21st consecutive year, UNC Chapel Hill was ranked number five for public universities. More importantly, we climbed to number 10 overall for best value schools and best value for public schools. We've remained number one in that spot for 17 consecutive years. It's something we're proud of and something I know is important to the citizens of North Carolina, the General Assembly, and our Board of Governors, and we're going to remain committed to that. And just this week, the Wall Street Journal and Times Higher Ed Rankings came out, and we were ranked third for public universities and 33rd overall. These rankings reflect the hard work of our students, faculty, and staff to always strive for excellence in the classroom, in the research laboratories, and out in the communities as we remain committed to being the university for North Carolina and for the citizens of North Carolina. And there's so much that we're, we continue to learn, and we're going to hear a little bit more about that today in our presentation from faculty in the School of Government about the way in which we provide incredible service to the state of North Carolina. We truly are the leading global public research university, and I hope you'll join me. Every opportunity that you have to thank those that make this possible and that we can remain proud to be the leading global public research university in the nation. Second, around COVID, we know that there's many people working on our campus, living and learning on our campus with high anxiety around COVID and the Delta variant, but I'm feeling confident about where we are as a campus community. Over 93% of our students, over 93% of our faculty, and over 85% of our staff are currently vaccinated, and those numbers continue to rise each week. Campus health has provided, even over the past 10 days, 200 COVID vaccines for students, staff, and faculty, and gave over 1,000 flu shots in the first 10 days. We can't forget about influenza, and we're already out there protecting against that, and we're proud of the work of our campus health experts that for several years in a row, they've won competition against other, our peer universities in terms of the number of students, faculty, and staff that come to be vaccinated for influenza. These are excellent numbers, and they speak to the hard work and the resilience of our campus health teams and others across our campus. We know that the level of community spread that we're seeing in North Carolina continues to be a concern and in the Triangle. We're fortunate to live and work here in Orange County that has the best vaccination rates and the lowest positivity rates in the state, but we have to remain vigilant. We've got to be sure that our students, faculty, and staff are caring for each other and protecting and adhering to the COVID-19 standards. I think it just shows that our detailed safety plans are working as we're limiting the spread on our campus. Beth Keith shared some numbers just yesterday. Asymptomatic positivity rate is .34%. That's down from 1.13% last week, and we've conducted over 4,700 tests with only 16 positive tests last week. So again, we're moving in the right direction, and symptomatic positivity rate is at 2.2% down from 6.8% last week where we conducted 390 tests. I can't thank those, Amir Barzan, Dr. Amir Barzan, and Amy Loftus and others that are making this all possible through our Carolina Together Testing Program. There are many others. Mike Barker, as I'm looking back, I know plays an important role with just making sure that the Hall Pass app and others, you know, that we have the ability to track the adherence to these COVID standards and to be able to work through our contact tracing. But we'll continue to adjust as necessary as we respond to the virus. Many people weren't sure that we'd ever make it this far in our semester, and I think this is again, a testament to the commitment of our students, faculty, and staff to our community safety. Our Board said this was, you know, obviously should be our top priority as we work through the summer, and I think as Chair Bullock's already mentioned in his comments, that we are delivering, but we will stay vigilant and adjust as necessary. But I want to just emphasize one more thing before I touch on my last point. You know, we're not just thinking about our campus community. We talk about being the university for our state, for the citizens of the region, and for North Carolina. UNC Health is leading the way in providing healthcare for all North Carolinians. On the UNC Healthcare Board meeting just this week, we discussed one UNC Health. It's our vision to reinvent what it means to be North Carolina's health system. UNC Health is driving affordable care, partnering with communities, and transforming health through innovation and discovery, and they're doing this all in the midst of a pandemic. Our healthcare workers are, many are exhausted, and they've been stretched to their limits, but I just want to thank all of them and every opportunity that you can to thank them for their service and their committed work. And I'm going to thank Dr. Wesley Burks, who's in the back of the room for his leadership of not only our School of Medicine but of UNC Health, so thank you. Third, last Friday, Mayor Pam Hemminger joined us at our Chancellor's Economic Development Council meeting. There are many of you in the room here that were part of that meeting and who have been working hard at this effort that we launched back earlier this spring. We announced actions that are part of the next phases in our university-town partnership and the joint Carolina Economic Development Strategy being led by UNC alumnus Doug Rothwell. We discussed the Adopt a Block Program to make sure that the town, that we as sort of the front doorstep to our university is a clean and welcoming Franklin Street and Columbia Street likewise as the university's sort of front door to the town. We want the town to always feel good and with us as a partner. That Adopt a Block Program is working. The Downtown Innovation District is beginning to come alive, and we announced at that meeting through our innovation hub, our first business partner in Bio Labs, North Carolina. And their goal, they announced at that meeting, is to have one new startup every month and bringing more business and help to Chapel Hill and to the region and to help drive the economy of North Carolina. There are going to be many other business partners as we build out this innovation hub, and I'm just proud of the fact that we announced this back in March, April, and it really has come alive, and the hard work of that team is coming to fruition. The downtown is at an exciting inflection point, and leaders in our local Carolina community have made progress, and I think we're going to see this over the next several years. Finally, as we move into the, further into the fall, we're looking forward to October 12th where we'll celebrate our university's 228th birthday, and we'll also celebrate just a few days before that, on October the 10th, we will hold a commencement ceremony for the class of 2020 where our own Coach Roy Williams will be the commencement speaker for the class of 2020. And I know they're excited to come back for that reunion type weekend and commencement in Keenan Stadium. I also just want to take an opportunity, although I don't know that Leah is here, Dr. Leah Cox, is Dr. Cox here? I don't think I see her. She's been working tirelessly since she arrived on July the 19th, but she is our new Vice Provost for Equity and Inclusion, and she's doing an incredible job. She's already done, been, you know, has met with so many groups on campus and student leaders and is really making a difference, leading our DE and I efforts. And I also just want to take an opportunity to thank Joel Curran. Joel, you've done a tremendous job over these nine years, and I want to thank you for your leadership, and you've built a great team and grateful for your dedication to Carolina. I'm going to thank Beth Keith and Tanya Moore for agreeing to step in and co-leading the team in an interim role as we are working on plans for a replacement of our Vice Chancellor for Communications. I want to now, I'm looking over to Mike Smith, and we're going to give Mike the podium. And one of, as you know, we love to showcase the amazing work of our faculty, and we are going to feature today some of the amazing work being done to serve government officials in our state, living out our mission as a proudly public university. And so as we know, Dr. Mike Smith, Dean of the School of Government, will introduce today's faculty speakers. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your service to the university. Yesterday, you honored our friend and colleague, John Sanders. I'm grateful for that. He loved this university, he loved this state, and he made a difference over the course of a really well-lived life. It's a sad day for us in some ways, of course, and at the same time, I am absolutely confident John would be happy to know that we're here talking to you about the School of Government. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Just a little context before I introduce my colleagues. We work with North Carolina public officials to help improve government in this state, to make it more effective, to make it more efficient. And in doing that, we touch people all across North Carolina every day. We help elected and appointed officials accomplish their goals, not our goals, their goals. We do it without regard to partisan affiliation or political ideology. We want to work with and we do work with everyone. Our goal, if you will, is to be Switzerland. I've asked my colleagues to talk about their day-to-day work, the various ways in which they make a difference and have an impact across North Carolina. Professor Jackie Green works with court officials and others in the area of juvenile delinquency. Professor Kara Malanzy works with local government officials and others in the area of public finance law. Their lawyers, we have about, and so am I, we have about 50 other faculty members, many of whom are lawyers, but others who work in different disciplines like leadership development and public technology and economic development, just to name a few. You've met one of our colleagues, Anita Brown Graham, a few weeks ago, who's leading this campus effort in Carolina across 100. No other university has focused a school that focuses exclusively on its own state. Carolina made that innovative and I think brilliant decision 90 years ago, almost exactly. And we recognize that we're not the only way that this great university carries out its public service mission for North Carolina. I'm biased. I think it's one of the leading ways in which we do, and we're grateful for the opportunity. Again, thank you for this chance to share with you a little bit about the school, and I'm now going to recognize my colleague, Jackie Green.
Professor Jackie Green. Take off my mask and put on my eyeballs for you here. Okay, so, good morning. I am Jackie Green, and it is my true pleasure to be with you this morning. I also did my undergraduate work here quite a long time ago. I believe it was the 200th anniversary of the university when I was an undergrad here, and it has been my complete pleasure to come back and join the faculty of the School of Government because this university launched me to a wonderful life. So I share the love of the university, and I'm happy to tell you a little bit about, a little bit about the world of juvenile justice and the work that I do at the School of Government. Is this going to be magical? So this is how we think about our work at the School of Government. We think about it sort of in three buckets. We do teaching, we produce scholarship, and we do advising, which is a really unique feature of the work at the School of Government. I'm going to share with you what that looks like in my day-to-day work. My area is juvenile justice because who doesn't want to think about juvenile delinquency all day long, right? It's fantastic. I actually do love it. So one of my primary groups is the State Agency that operates juvenile justice in North Carolina. They work at the Department of Public Safety, and the really cool thing about working with them is while they are state employees, they work in every county across North Carolina, and they touch every child and every family that is coming through the juvenile justice system. So by working with them, I feel like I in turn have an impact and work with folks everywhere across the state of North Carolina. I also work a lot with court officials. So we run North Carolina's Judicial College at the School of Government. We spend a lot of time with judges. And the judges I work with most are district court judges because they are the folks who hear our juvenile delinquency cases. I also work a lot with the North Carolina Conference of District Attorneys, the prosecutors who are in court on these cases, and a bit with the indigent defense bar as well because all kids are presumed indigent in North Carolina. And then you'll see, we also, I do a lot of work with the legislature. So we have a really unique relationship with the legislature. We by statute are considered legislative staff, and so we have a confidential relationship with legislators in North Carolina, which is really wonderful. They can call us, they can ask us questions, and we can help them figure out how they can accomplish what they want to accomplish within the bounds of the law, and they can do that without worry that those conversations are going to end up somehow in the news. And that's, that's really wonderful, and their staff call us as well. So what my work looks like day-to-day, I have done a lot of work over the last couple of years supporting the development of legal structures in North Carolina. You may not be enmeshed in the world of juvenile delinquency as I am, but we've had the seismic shift in North Carolina where we raised the age. I don't know if you've heard that phrase, but we brought 16 and 17-year-olds under the jurisdiction of the juvenile court for most, most, not all, delinquency offenses. I'm not going to teach you, don't worry. And so I have done a lot of work with folks around sharpening that statute. No bill is ever perfect. I was a legislative staffer for a long time, so I feel like I can say that. And so I've done a lot of work with this Juvenile Jurisdiction Advisory Committee, which was created as part of that legislation to oversee the implementation of that law, to figure out what we need to fix around how that law was initially written. And one of the topics that has been focus of that committee has been the minimum age for juvenile delinquency, which has been, and today as we sit here is six, but actually will be changing. So I created some scholarship to help them with that conversation, and that you see here was a juvenile law bulletin on the legal issues around trying very young children as respondents in delinquency cases. And then I just put the phone up here because really, a lot of the work we do on legislation and legal structure development are quick phone calls. Hey, can you, can you help me with this thing or that thing? So there's these kind of long projects and these shorter, quick hitting phone calls that we take. I do a lot of work to help folks understand the law, and that involves, of course, first and foremost, teaching. So I actually do teach. You see up here, I have a course on juvenile delinquency for district court judges that's coming up in November, which I can't wait for because it will be my first in-person class in about two years. And so I will spend three days with the judges, walking from beginning to end, here's the law in juvenile delinquency, here's the procedure you should be following in these cases in your courtroom. Then we also create all kinds of scholarship and materials for folks that they can use in their day-to-day work. So I wrote a book that you see up here on the Raise the Age Law that in painful detail lays out all the elements of that new law and how that's supposed to work. Knowing that many people won't actually read the book, we also create shorter, accessible materials. So we blog, and you see on this screen, a blog, just one of the blogs that I wrote a few months ago about what I thought was a super interesting decision from the Court of Appeals about questioning kids in school and when they get Miranda warnings. So we write these kind of short blogs and put them out to the world, and lots of folks do read them. In fact, I got a call just this week about one of my blogs from a juvenile court counselor in a rural North Carolina county who had read a blog I wrote about, I did a back-to-school blog, but you know, for delinquency, that was about school notification and felony juvenile delinquency cases. And she had read it, and And she had read it, and she said, you know, I'm really wondering, does this apply to homeschools too? Because in her rural county, a lot of kids are homeschooled. And when I get those kinds of emails and phone calls, it thrills my soul, because I know people are reading this stuff, and they're using it in their work. So we try to be very practical. And then you'll see also a flow chart that I created, because some people won't even read the blog, but they'll look at a picture, right? So there's also a flow chart that some of the district court judges have taken to calling chutes and ladders, because it's super complicated, our juvenile justice system. I see that as job security. And then, finally, I spend a lot of time helping folks implement the law. They call, they email for help, and this is the advising part of my work. Some days, it feels like I'm putting out a fire. Sometimes I wonder, am I in UNC healthcare and operating a delinquency emergency room here? Because a judge will call, and they'll pop me on speakerphone, and they'll say, hey, I'm here with the prosecutor and the juvenile attorney and the juvenile court counselor, and we have a runaway from Tennessee, and we don't know what to do. And boom, you know, I'm there to help them kind of put out that fire and figure out where the law is that they need to apply in this particular case. And sometimes it's more just putting the puzzle pieces together, you know? Things are complicated, the real world is complicated, these cases can be complicated. And so sometimes they call when they have those really complicated cases and say, I just do not know what I'm supposed to do here, what the law tells me to do. Can you help me figure that out? And we spend some time with them doing just that. So that's a really quick-hitting overview of my day-to-day work. We do it all in service to North Carolina public officials. It's really fantastic that we hear from them so often. We spend so much time with them, and all of our work is very practical. We're not folks who sit in our office and think about a really interesting intellectual idea and write a law review article. That's not our world. Our world is, you know, you work here in North Carolina. For me, you work somehow in the juvenile justice system, and you need to understand the law that governs the work that you do, and I'm here to help you do that. So that's my world. Now you're going to hear from Professor Malanzy about a very different world that she works in at the School of Government.
So good morning. My name's Cara Malanzy, and I actually do a lot of the similar things that Jackie just described, just for a different audience. So I work with North Carolina local governments. So who does that encompass? City and county managers, attorneys, finance officers, clerks, elected officials. I also work with state agencies and state legislative staff in the same ways that Jackie just described, and of course, citizens. From time to time, I work directly with citizens. As Mike said, my areas of focus are general local government law with a specialty in local government finance. But that just paints a part of the picture. Jackie talked to you about the three ways that we envision our work, right? When we think about teaching, research, and advising. I want to focus in how we approach that work to maximize our impact. And so the first thing that comes to mind is we're responsive. And again, some of this is duplicative, because Jackie just talked about ways in which she's responsive in her area. I thought I'd give you a sense of what this means for me by giving you a snapshot of a week in my life at the School of Government. Of course, we're all always engaged in teaching prep and long-term research assignments, but I spend a bulk of every single day responding to questions from state and local government officials. So last week, sort of in my one-week period here, I fielded 48 inquiries from 42 different local governments and three state agencies, and I talked to folks from one of our largest counties to one of our tiniest towns, almost all the way to Murphy out there, Hayesville is, in the western part of our state, and everything in between. And what were the questions they were asking? Well, here's sort of a sample, at least of the shortest questions, the ones that I could fit on a slide to give you a taste of what this looks like on a day-to-day basis. Some of these questions I can answer in minutes, others take hours and sometimes days to do more research on, to get back. But regardless, I'm responding in real time to these local governments for the issues that they're facing now, and providing them the legal guidance to help them navigate through these issues. This just really only gives you one sense of that responsiveness. There are other dimensions to that. I often think about my work with local government officials as being very symbiotic, in the sense that my entire research agenda is dictated by their needs, but my research is benefited by their experiences. So, right, so they call me with questions, and that informs what I research. I then write and put out guidance. They, local government officials, state officials, then use that in practice, they use that legal guidance, and of course, they come back to me then with more nuanced questions and issues that they've run into, which then informs further research, and then I bring into the classroom to share with other local governments. And that just continues to replicate itself. I joke that I never have to come up with a fake hypo in class, because I have plenty of real-life situations to pull from in just about every possible scenario. So looking beyond responsiveness, another way that I think helps us maximize our impact is our ability to connect. So of course, you might think of connection in the obvious ways. We bring state and local government officials together in the classroom, at courses and conferences. We facilitate information sharing amongst those local government officials, so they can help each other with issues that are either regional or sometimes statewide. We have a number of digital platforms that we've created to allow those local government officials to interact on a daily basis with each other, and they're incredibly active. We've fostered a great community of state and local government officials who want to help each other navigate, who don't always want to recreate the wheel, and want to work with each other and work with us to help everyone else. We connect in other ways, though, too. What's interesting about our work is because so many local government officials call us, we've sort of proverbially heard it all, right? And so when, we're then able to share the experiences and lessons from one unit with others. I actually just had a call the other day with a county attorney who was convinced he had one that was going to stump me, right? I have a novel and, of course, very complicated issue, as it turns out, about two years ago, another county had that exact same issue. And it was invaluable to that attorney for me to make that connection, so that he can then learn from the experiences of that other county, right? So that's another way that we make these connections. Sometimes we connect in ways that, or we stumble upon, I should say, ways to connect. One of the areas that I focus on, in my areas of research focus, is local government finance law. Part of that involves that county commissioners have to provide operational and capital funding to local school districts to supplement the funding that they receive from the state. And after a few years of fielding questions from county commissioners and county staff, and questions from school officials and school staff, it became obvious to me that there was an incredible disconnect. They would often call me just to complain about the other side. There was a lot of finger-pointing about who was involved and who was responsible for a great deal of conflict between these two boards. What became obvious to me, though, was that there was a disconnect between what each side knew about the other's obligations and financial situation. And so I created a course that brought, and still brings, county commissioners and county staff and public school board members and public school staff together, with the idea that if they were to learn together and have a common set of understandings to start with, it could help with the communication and the relationship. I will tell you, those courses are not easy. They are often contentious. I get, it is the most nervous that I get before I teach one of those courses, because of how people are going to come in that room with preconceived notions and really strong opinions. But almost always, that course sparks positive change in those relationships going forward. I have an example from a county commissioner, and it's such a vivid picture of this particular commission who walked into this course, I don't even know why he was there. I think someone made him come. But he walked into that course, and he was clearly convinced that the local school board was evil, and that everything, everything was the local school board's fault. He came to the course, and he really, I think, hoped that I was going to validate his thoughts on that, that I was going to give him the legal tools to run back and say, yes, it is all your fault, and we have all the power. Of course, that's not how it worked. And to his credit, he sat in that course, and he participated, he asked questions, he listened, and he learned. And still, I thought, when he walked out the door, that he was probably pretty disappointed that he had just wasted a day here in Chapel Hill. Until about nine months or so later, when I get the phone call from this commissioner out of the blue, asking if he could come back and teach in the next iteration of the course with me, because he wanted to give testimony to how what he learned in that class allowed him, empowered him, were his words, to change the way he approached this, to take the legal tools and the practical knowledge that he gave and to approach it differently. And he wanted to shout from the rooftop the progress that his two boards, these two boards had made in his county. And that's sort of the most exciting aspect of the work we do. I think the final thing that I want to touch on in terms of our impact is our flexibility, right? So we have a pretty good example of what we've done in the past 18 months. So many on this campus have turned on a dime and done things in vastly different ways in response to the pandemic, and we're no different. We're unique in the way that, as March 2020 hit, and many of us went home, local government still had to figure out how to get the garbage collected, and how to do building code inspections, and how to continue to provide assistance to their communities and meet new needs. They had to turn on a dime, and we were able to drop everything that we were doing from a research perspective and teaching and be there right with them. We started, or I started holding bi-weekly Zoom calls, twice-a-week Zoom calls, that maxed out the license capacity, every single call, with local government officials, helping them figure out, because they're constrained by the law, they can only, they only have so much flexibility, how could they act within the constraints of the law and respond to the pandemic? And all of my colleagues did similar work. You know, fast forward to 2021, March of 2021, the federal government enacts the American Rescue Plan Act. This provides an investment, among other things, a huge investment. All of our counties, all of our municipalities are eligible for funding and significant amounts of funding from the federal government. It may be the largest federal investment in our local governments ever, and yet, the money comes with a ton of compliance requirements, a ton of strings, that all 600-plus of our local governments now have to comply with, even those in our 100-person communities. And so this past summer, I turned on a dime again, and now my work is almost exclusively focused on helping them navigate the American Rescue Plan Act, doing the same sorts of things, holding weekly calls, putting out guidance documents. We're even launching a course in a couple of weeks to help them navigate this. So I think these are just a few examples of how we strive to maximize our impact. And like Jackie, I love what I do, and I love when we can find ways to increase our impact, because the best part of our jobs is helping local government officials accomplish what they want to do for their communities. Thank you for letting us talk today.
Do we have some time? Can we take some questions?
I could ask a couple of questions.
Trustee Coates.
Very interesting presentation. Do you maintain a database that's searchable of prior issues or opinions that have been offered?
Yes, yes, sort of. Not of every question that comes in, right? Of every, but we have mechanisms to capture some of these digital platforms that I mentioned. So our Coatscan blog, what, how we, that is our main outlet, at least on the local government side, for providing information to local governments. What we capture is the questions that come in and our responses, that then get posted as blog posts that everyone can search. And so we have thousands of blog posts out there that then becomes a database of information that can be searched by anyone at any point. There are other examples of similar categories and databasing from other colleagues, but that's the main one that I use.
Okay, and one last question. When you've got adverse parties, two different attorneys out there, maybe the city has one stance, a private party has another, how do you, who's your client, or how do you handle that sort of a situation?
That's a great question. And the beauty about our work is no one is our client, and so everyone is our client. And in just about every situation, whether or not I think there might be different people who call me around the same issue with different, you know, adversarial stances, I'll make sure that the local government knows that, or whoever's calling me knows that I'm not their attorney. I can provide what I think is legal guidance on what the law says, but I'm going to tell the same thing to whoever calls me. So if the county calls me and they're adversarial to the city, I'm going to say the same thing to the county as I say to the city. And that's in part because neither are my client, and so I can serve both.
Thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Pryor, I think, has a question or comment.
Don't go anywhere just yet. So I happened to notice you hold a distinguished professorship in the name of Robert Bradshaw. As a very young man, I had the privilege to work a fair amount with Mr. Bradshaw, and he was as fine a person as you could ever hope to hold a distinguished professorship in his name. I happen to recall, and I just confirmed, he did go to Duke undergrad and law school chancellor. So I had to figure that out, because I knew that Bob did not go here, and sure enough, that was given in his name by the former mayor of Charlotte and longtime legal partner of his, Richard Vinroot, who was a Morehead scholar here. And just so in the recognition of those two fine people, I just wanted that noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you want to add something, Dean Smith?
I'm thrilled that you mentioned that. Richard Vinroot did honor his law partner, Bob Bradshaw, in that way. He loved Bob Bradshaw, and he also loved the idea that he was honoring this former chair of the Duke Board of Trustees with a distinguished professorship at Carolina. Absolutely.
Davis, trustee Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment about the extraordinary work of the Institute of Government, now School of Government, and, you know, founded by Albert Coates alongside his amazing wife, Gladys, and all the important work they did. Lore has it that, as a law student, he was taking a North Carolina history course, and in that course is where he had the idea for the founding of the institute. And it was unique at that time and remains unique in our nation in serving local officials and state officials. And it is truly our agricultural extension, right? So it's what many schools like NC State have ag extension. It is our extension into the state in serving local and state officials, and I'm so grateful for its work. John Sanders, we did recognize him yesterday. Of course, we could, he deserves recognition again and again, intend to draft a resolution honoring and commemorating his life for our next board meeting. And Mike, we'd love to have you back for that. But I do want to just say, John meant a lot to me personally, was one of my mentors, and a truly extraordinary man, a life well-lived, fully committed to the state of North Carolina and to this university. So thank you, Mike. Thanks for all that you and everyone at the Institute of Government, now School of Government, does.
Thank you, trustee Davis.
I joined it when it was the Institute of Government, so I totally understand that and appreciate that very much, and we appreciate all of you also.
So I have a couple of comments I want to make, Dean Smith. As I had previously been the liaison to the School of Government and had a great working relationship with you and your team. Trustee Coates, the blogs that are produced by the School of Government, just kind of to elaborate on that issue, are really good. Practicing lawyers, which I am one, in a courthouse routinely go to their phone and search the blogs for specific legal issues as it relates to criminal law or civil law. It's a routine thing. I will also say, even before I was on the Board of Trustees, the School of Government returned my calls very quickly. And they all, and Mike, I think it's fair to say that the School of Government acts on- almost as an informal court of appeals at times, because judges and prosecutors and defense attorneys and plaintiffs lawyers, defense lawyers of all types, will rely on the statement of the law, and I think that was said correctly, the statement of what the law is in terms of resolving day-to-day issues that might otherwise end up in the court of appeals. I find that to be the case on a day-to-day basis. So on behalf of myself and the board, we thank you for the presentation and all the work you do, Mike, and your team.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Chair Bolick's already said. And when I called Mike to say, I'd love for you to, you know, bring a few faculty and talk about some of the incredible work that really benefits the, you know, the government officials across the state, he could have, you know, Cara and Jackie, outstanding presentations, but I know you could have brought two dozen faculty, and we could have been here all day. But thanks so much for your, I love, Cara, what you said, you know, it's about teaching, research, and advising. And, you know, again, thanks for all that you do. And I know that there are many others in the school that do that. So we'll bring you back again.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break, a hard reset at 10:25, just to give everybody a chance to have restroom break. Okay, trustees, if you could have a seat, please. Take your seats. Okay, thank you. We'll come back to order. And at this time, I'll recognize the chair of the Finance Infrastructure and Audit Committee, Vice Chair John Pryor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, the Finance Infrastructure and Audit Committee met, and for informational purposes only, we had an annual audit report from Dean Weber, which was typically well-put-together presentation by Dean. Of note, I found out for the first time that there are only seven people on Dean's audit team, which surprised me, given the voluminous amount of work product that they generate. So thank you for that, Dean. We also had an investment fund update from John King from the management company. And he was rightly very proud of the 42% return that they have generated with his team, which is nothing short of stellar. I couldn't help but point out, to keep John's competitive desire to exceed all competitors, that Washington University had a slightly higher one than that, and I think it had an intended effect. So, but that's very impressive work from the management company. And then we had a finance update from Vice Chancellor Nate Knufman that is more than I'm going to go through right now, but is related to the budgeting authority that is now sort of being shifted some from the Board of Governors to the Board of Trustees, and more about that in the future from Vice Chancellor Knufman. Then for action items, we had designer selections for the Global Leadership Center at the Gilling School of Public Health, Bingham Hall Comprehensive Renovation, Neuroscience Research Building, and university architect Anna Wu presented that, along with the Kenan Football Center renovations, along with Evan Yaskey. We also had the McCall Building renovation. All of these items have been before the board multiple times. So I think that this was either the second or third look that the board had had on all of these. And then we had Gordon Merklin present on a lease item for the Institute for the Environment, something that I happen to be very familiar with by virtue of having been on the Board of Visitors for the Institute for the Environment for about 10 years in the past, before coming to this board. And then we had a transfer of the university's endowment distribution on unrestricted funds, and that is something that had been rolled over from the previous meeting, and that was approved. And then the last thing we had for an action item was the annual review and approval of the Internal Audit Charter and the Finance Infrastructure and Audit Committee Charter, also by Dean. also by Dean Weber. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve all of those items in one block if we can, Mr. Secretary.
Same move.
Do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Have a second. Is there any discussion as to the items that Vice Chair Pryor and Chair of the Committee Pryor has offered the board? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Thank you, Vice Chancellor, I mean Vice Chair Pryor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of switch it up. Instead of doing University Affairs next, I'm gonna do External Relations, because the University Affairs will then flow into a closed session. So, I'll recognize at this point Trustee McCullin, Chair McCullin, you have the floor. Also, when you're, would you turn your mic on, Trustee McCullin? And, and I see you have your mask on, and if, and I violated the rule that I was just gonna put up. I guess they're having a difficulty hearing us online if we have our masks on. So, as you're talking, if you would take your mask on to talk into the microphone, I think that would be helpful.
I have difficulty understanding this in the room. I certainly can't.
Well, Roger, stand, well, okay, I'm calling on you, Mr. McCullin. The floor is yours.
All right. Yesterday, on the External Relations Committee, we had a public affairs update from Clayton Summers. We had a communications update from Tanya Moore and Beth Keith. We had a report from David Ruth and Leslie Nelson about the campaign for Carolina. And we had a Board of Visitors update from Renee Walters Morgan. And we also discussed the election of members to the UNC Board of Directors. Do we have any questions?
And I do believe we have one action item that will be handled in closed session.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Any questions for Chair McCullin? Hearing no questions, I'll, I'll turn the floor to Trustee Brian, Chair of the University Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a good University Affairs Committee meeting yesterday. Heard a number of presentations. The first was from Rachel Feldman in the interim Vice Provost for Enrollment, shared about the 2021 class profile for the university. I think we had a record number of applicants, and I think maybe a record yield as well, which means we got a lot of bodies on campus right now, which is a good thing. Phenomenal class, really great to hear about some of those. She even profiled a couple of students for us. So, very excited about the new, new class here at the university. We also heard on Carolina Next, on our strategic initiative on promoting democracy, from Professor Mary Rose Papandrea over at the Law School. Really interesting commentary on the work she's working on. And got to talk a little bit about the program in public discourse, which I had the opportunity of being involved with a few years ago, and excited to sort of see where her work goes, and look forward to hopefully hearing back from her with increased number of action steps under that plan. So, and last, we heard from Provost Bob Bluen, and Baba Cunningham, and Michelle Brown on the Intercollegiate Athletics and Financial Transparency Report, which just provided some great information. Really, I think most impressive to a lot of us was how great our student athletes are doing, and great, just great, great reports all around. And, and that was all of our informational meetings, and we have some HR items for closed session.
Thank you, Trustee and Chair Brian. Now, would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Secretary Turner is unavailable due to a prior business engagement. So, at this time, I will call on Trustee Artist Neal, who previously has served as Secretary of the Board for that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.1, Subsection A, Subsection 1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under Section 126-22, and also pursuant to Section 143-318.11, Subsection A, Subsection 2, Subsection A, Subsection 3, Subsection A, Subsection 5, Subsection A, Subsection 6, Subsection A, Subsection 7, and Subsection A, Subsection 9.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Second, second from Trustee White. As a matter of discussion, I will point out, as I did last time, that we go into closed session as a normal course of business to discuss items that Trustee Artist Neal has listed under the statute that require closed session. Typically, they are personnel matters or matters that deal with the university council and the board. So, any additional discussion from what I've stated? Hearing none, all those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye. All right, we're in, we will be in closed session. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second for Trustee Davis. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Have one other my, item to address in open session. I'm gonna read a draft resolution, and at the, at the finish of the resolution, I'll entertain a motion to accept that resolution and a second, and then if there's any discussion, we'll have that. Reads as follows: "Whereas the Board of Trustees is responsible for approving all honorary degrees and other honorary or memorial distinctions conferred by University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, including distinguished alumnus awards, subject to policies as may be established by the Board of Governors. Whereas the Board of Trustees first adopted the Trustees' Regulation on Honorary Degrees on November 18, 1972. And whereas the Board of Trustees last amended the Trustees' Regulation on Honorary Degrees at its meeting on March 25, 2021, through a substitute amendment attached heretofore as Exhibit A. And whereas the Board of Trustees wishes to temporarily suspend the applicability of certain amendments made on March 25, 2021 for awards not yet selected. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees temporarily suspends the applicability of the amendments made to Section 3 of the Trustees' Regulation on Honorary Degrees for awards not yet selected until June 30 of 2022, or until otherwise modified or rescinded by subsequent board action, whichever is sooner." Do I have a motion to accept that resolution? Have motion from Trustee Davis, and I have a second from Trustee McCullin. All those in, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Trustee McCullin, a second from Trustee Davis. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.